Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Welcome to the Mayor Commission Work Session on January 6, 2020, and Happy New Year. Let me say, I know this was originally scheduled to be a strategic planning workshop, but after discussing it with staff and looking at the schedule, I thought that to move to strategic planning at this point would not be the most productive use of staff time. We've had a lot of changes at the senior levels, and we do have a number of projects that we're trying to move ahead on, and we have a pending election coming up which will change the makeup, hopefully not too much of the current commission. I think we will dive into strategic planning right after the election. So, I made the decision to counsel that, move this to a workshop. I think there's some important issues, a number of important items that we need to discuss as a commission. So, that's why we are where we are today. And first item is Status of the Golf Course, RFP. Madam President, you want to tee this up, please?
I'd be happy to, thank you. Been thinking about all the golf course puns we could use today, so...
Okay, okay.
And first, Mayor, I just wanted, I know that there was some news that came out on Friday, and wanted to congratulate you and to our new City Administrator, Fay Johnson. Happy to have you here now without the interim title, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
The golf course clearly is an important part of our community and in the South End. This is a project that has been, you know, on our books and on our minds and as a part of conversation of our neighborhoods for many years. We've had multiple entities in the past year or two who have expressed interest in this site, including two who have not been able to come up with the necessary funding and financing for the site. So, that being said, I understand that because of one of those, McGetrick, that PGA of America is also interested in the site, and the city's been working with them, and some others who have shown interest in developing the golf course. What I'd like to do is to make sure that whatever project or proposal that comes up, that we don't see the same mistakes that we saw in the previous proposals. I want to make sure that citizen input is received, and I think that it is vitally important that we look at how the 8111 site plays into the mix. So, today, with this being on the agenda, I'd like to confirm what is the timeline of any new conversations or developers that are looking at the site, as well as what are the next steps towards an RFP if that's necessary? And third, I'd like to confirm plans to seek community input at this stage of the process as well. So, I look forward to staff's report on this.
Thank you. Mr. Green, can you kind of give us the current status of where we are?
Certainly, Mayor. Again, I'll be very brief, but again, the redevelopment of the golf course is one of our 16 strategic priorities. As everyone is aware, we've had a team on place kind of working, representing the different departments. A quick chronology, I'm not going to go through all of the items, but as you may remember, back in February, there was a presentation made to the City Commission by four proposers. We had discussions with West Palm Beach Golf Links, and those did not realize a redevelopment proposal that we were able to move forward with. As Commissioner Lambert mentioned, we were dealing with McGetrick, and again, that did not move forward. So, I'm simply going to highlight the items in green. So, back in October, we had given McGetrick Golf Management an extension until November 18th to come up with funds for Phase 1, which was approximately $9 million to redevelop the course. There was another $9 million price tag for the construction of the clubhouse training facility and other amendments. So, there were extensions granted. A few days before that extension was to hit, McGetrick brought in Seth Waugh, who is the CEO of PGA of America, the organizing body that runs PGA golf throughout the world. They expressed a potential interest in developing the municipal golf course, but again, they were just brought in late, so they had not done their due diligence or done any pro formas. On November 18th, McGetrick did not meet the deadline that we had given them for moving forward based on our October 18th letter. The Commission discussed this at their meeting on November 25th, and then formally on December 3rd, we notified McGetrick that they will not be granted the additional 90-day extension they were seeking, and negotiations were terminated. We subsequently followed that up with a letter, so where we are right now is that we are no longer in the RFP process. The cone of silence has been lifted. I will tell you that I have been contacted by a lot of different folks who are still interested in developing the course. Topgolf continues to show interest, the DeVasta folks, heard some conversations recently with a group called Falcon Group, Spot Built, who's interested in doing an entertainment facility with a hotel. So, there's a lot of interest. So, at this point, we're asking the Commission, how would you like us to proceed? To Commissioner Lambert's point, I think whoever we have our next discussion with, we need to make sure that they are financially strong and able to do the deal. But at this point, we'll turn it back to the Commission, and we'll follow whatever direction you provide staff.
Thank you for that update. At some point, I'm not sure today is the day, Commissioners, we will have to address the question of what are we willing to do to facilitate the funding or development of the course? Many of the proposals that have come to us have involved some redevelopment of the exterior portion of the course, which would require, you know, that's obviously a purpose that is not golf, and so I don't know what the appetite is. But again, I'm not sure today is the day, but at some point, we should have that discussion. Mr. Green, have we heard back from Mr. Waugh at all? I know he was over, I had a conversation with him before the end of the year. He was traveling to Australia, and he was one, he's the only one that I've heard from directly, and he had indicated a desire to kind of do some due diligence on the course.
Exactly. He's looking for a period of time. I spoke to his attorney. They are interested in going through a due diligence period, so I think the interest is still there on their part. I will say that they have not done or reviewed, they asked McGetrick for their pro forma, so I don't believe they've conducted that analysis yet. So, I think they want to do that. I will say that Topgolf calls me every couple of weeks, they still have a strong interest. To the Mayor's point, if a use like that goes in in the southwest corner, there's a road that's going to have to be built that's going to go to that site. We'll have to look at what other improvements may be necessary, particularly at the Georgia-Forest Hill intersection. I think if you carved out a portion of that for residential, I think you'd have developers lining up to be involved in a project like that. So, I think there'd be a lot of interest, but I think the PGA of America is still very interested in the project.
And I made it very clear in my conversation with Mr. Waugh that while he's certainly free to kick the tires and undergo due diligence, will not be exclusive. So, now that the cone of silence has been lifted, the RFP has been terminated, others would be, I expected that others would be knocking on our doors with proposals, and he understood that. So, Madam President, did you have some further requests or direction or...
Sure, thank you.
Suggestions for direction?
Thank you, and thank you for the timeline. I appreciate that of where, how we've gotten to where we are today. I think that what, a very important aspect of this for me is the community outreach. And while we are, you know, lifted from the cone of silence, which I know was some concern before, what are we doing to, I want to take some time to talk about what we are doing to communicate with the residents, and I know that I've been working with Ms. Johnson on putting something together, and I presume that's why Mr. Fauna is sitting at the table today as well. So, if we could hear an update on that, that'd be great.
Good morning. Armando Fauna, Assistant City Administrator. So, yeah, we definitely intend to get community input on this project, and, you know, to the Mayor's point, it's kind of hard to proceed unless we know what the appetite is in the community as well. But I also want to, I also want to make a point that it's a South End location, but it's a community-wide asset, and so we want to intentionally make sure that we are getting input from the entire community, including voices that typically don't voice their opinion. And so, we're going to have an intentional effort with that. We're getting some technology to help with that effort over the next month or so. We already ordered some tablets that'll help us with some remote data gathering, but it's going to be an intentional effort over the next few months to gather data on what the community-wide interest is for that site.
Okay, great, thank you. And I just want to confirm that while we have this time without the cone of silence, that we are using it to gather that data.
And Commissioner, I can see us doing it two ways. So, we get the community input, we get direction from the Commission, and then we can go out and suggest, okay, here's what we want to do with the golf course. We want a par 72 golf course, so many yards. We want a residential component, or we don't want a residential component, and you lay out the factors that you want to see and have everybody submit. And as part of that, I would argue that we require some type of financial backing or some type of financial commitment so we can investigate to make sure that company that is making the proposal is financially strong. The second alternative would be to say, okay, give us your best proposal. That's kind of what we did with City Place back when City Place was first started. We went out to bid and said, okay, give us your best proposal, and we got a variety of different concerns as to how that 77-acre project would be developed. So, you could do the same thing here. I don't know if the Commission wants to go that direction, but you could simply go out and say, you know, give us an idea of what you would like to see, and then you're going to get a more diverse, if you will, array of proposals coming in, but you could either go either option.
Well, I think that what I'd like to see is some kind of community outreach and see what, as Mr. Fauna says, the city would like to do with this city-owned asset, to give us some direction. I'm not anxious to rush into another RFP at this point without getting some kind of, or having some kind of mechanism in place where we're able to hear from the citizens and maybe even weigh in on the question of do we sell a portion of the golf course to fund this redevelopment, or people are versed in that, whatever it is. And just so the Commission knows, I don't know how public it is, I've asked Mr. Fauna as Assistant City Administrator to head up a community engagement team that will help us as a city, as an administration, become more strategic as we engage, as we participate in community engagement efforts throughout the city. And he mentioned some software that's bringing to bear. There are representatives from the various departments that are working with this task force, and so that is why Mr. Fauna will be taking the lead on whatever this community engagement effort will look like on behalf of the golf course. But I'd like to hear from the public and have them weigh in before we move toward another RFP or ITN, or whatever we call it. Yes?
Just one thing to add, and that is, I think part of the engagement with the public needs to include the costs and the cost for maintaining a golf course and what that would mean fiscally, because, you know, it's very easy to say, well, I'll just maintain a golf course, but it's very expensive, and a lot of cities are struggling with that very issue, so we need to make sure that the public understands the fiscal ramifications.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Nearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a comment, which I believe we're all on one accord regarding this. For the five years that I've been on this commission, we have talked about this, and it just feels like we have not gotten any further in terms of what the decision is. And so, I don't have the answers. What I'm saying is I can understand the frustration from our community members, as this has been a topic that we have talked about, and it seems like we continue to press, reset on it. Again, there is no blame, it's just a matter of fact. And so, and whatever we do, you know, it is, and I don't speak for the Commission or the Mayor, but I would think we would want to in some way do our due diligence, but expedite it so that we can finally put a stake in the sand and move forward with whatever the decision is.
Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor. Along the lines that I think I've heard here today, it sounds like all along, we've kind of followed the model of going out and saying, give us your best proposal. I would be in favor of what we're discussing today, going back out to the community, finding those priorities. Here are top three, top five, whatever they are, must haves, and here are some like to haves, and then put that back out to the community, the development community, to say, here's what we're looking for, show us this, and then if you feel like there's an upgrade in there, also put those in. And I think the second part of this is for this project as well as other projects, CRA projects and large city development projects, that if we could start to get some financial parameters around these RFPs before they go out, not only parameters of what we're looking to see in investment, but also the financial ability of those applicants, because pictures look good on paper, but to Commissioner Nearing's point, you know, we keep cycling through some of these very, very important projects that are anchoring sites in our city that could be really great, but it's difficult. And I think the more that we can try to get that vetted out in the upfront, the better it will be for all of our community.
Very good point. Commissioner Budusi?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with all the comments conveyed by my colleagues here this morning. I believe that we need to keep all of our options open, at the same time, I'd like to, we'd obviously like to move this thing forward. I don't want to lose sight, though, of the significance, I believe, the significance of interest by PGA of America. This is something that they haven't done before, that they're willing to, you know, potentially get involved in our city. You know, this is the national organization that, you know, could certainly bring a lot to our city. So, I think we need to, you know, to recognize that it is significant that they've shown an interest, but that we need to keep all of our options open, obviously.
No, that's a very good point, and I've, obviously, I would love to have someone of the nature and caliber as a PGA to invest in this particular project, but they are doing their due diligence and certainly entitled to do that. However, I want to put all my eggs in that particular basket, and I've made it pretty clear to Mr. Waugh that there would be others coming down the pipe, but I think it could not hurt for us to hear from the residents of the city as to what they would like to see in the course that will give us as a body some direction. Yes, Madam President?
Thank you, and just don't want to lose sight of the 8111 site in this community outreach as well. I think that that site is a gateway-worthy site in our city for the South End, and I think that residents and city are all looking for, you know, what can we do there, whether it is in conjunction with this project or just at the same time. So, thank you.
Madam City Administrator?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Okay. Commissioner Lambert, you and I have talked about your planned meeting for February 8th, and I know that's going to be a larger community meeting. Are you okay with the outreach for the golf course being part of that meeting, or are you looking for a separate meeting?
No, I think that would be great. So, what Ms. Johnson's referring to is I've been working with some of the neighborhood associations in the South End to come together as a group, similarly to what they do in the North End, to have a singular voice to say that, you know, these are the issues that are important to us, and to hear from city staff on those as well. And Ms. Johnson and I talked about that this would be an optimal time to gather input from South End residents. To Mr. Fauna's point, though, I do think that additional outreach might be warranted here if you're looking, as we're looking for additional citywide input, but I think that there'll be a number of residents from the South End there that day.
Well, I'm happy to have that as a part. I don't want, and I think Mr. Fauna made this point, this is a city asset, and so I would like to have an opportunity for the city as a whole, or residents from throughout the city, weigh in on what they want their golf course to look like. So, I don't want it limited to just South End participation. It could be part of a South End meeting, but I'd like to see a broader type of outreach effort. Mr. Fauna?
Also, one of the, one of the ways that we're looking at providing or getting input from the community is not necessarily the traditional community meeting where folks just stand up and kind of give their opinion, because a lot of folks aren't comfortable doing that. So, what we may do at that meeting is just provide the opportunities for how they can provide the input, not necessarily make it a public forum to provide input, if you know what I mean. So, or it could be a mixture of both, but I'll get with you on that separately for that particular meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Shoff, did I see your hand up? Okay, do we have any other comments? So, we got some clear direction? Okay, thank you all very much. The next item on the agenda is, again, one of those topics we've been, I guess, nibbling around for a while, and that's really where do we go from here in terms of selecting the new Executive Director of the CRA? As Commissioners, you may recall, I have put forth the idea that we separate from the RMA contract, the executive director position, make the CRA Executive Director an employee of the city. That's just a proposal, and I don't think that we have come together as a body to discuss that concept. So, this is the time in which I'd like to hear your thoughts, where you would like to go, whether you agree, don't agree with that particular proposal, and that'll give staff some direction as to how we move ahead with the selection of the new Executive Director, whether that continues to be an employee of RMA, in which case, there is a path we would go down, but if it is going to be bifurcated from the RMA contract, then there's a different path we would go down. But I just wanted to put that on the table for discussion and get your thoughts. So, I think before we move further, let's hear an update on the CRA management structure currently. Is RMA going to present, Kim?
You got you?
Okay, please.
Yes, if I can, just make a footnote.
Sure.
At the last work session where this topic was discussed, some of the Commissioners wanted to take a look across the state to see if there were a similar model that you're recommending, Mayor, in place, and RMA has done that research, so we're asking them to kind of do that update.
Sorry.
Really? We got to wait for that?
Stop trying.
Sorry. I don't know what she's trying to do. Sorry.
While Allison is getting her presentation together, I just want to remind the Commissioners, at least in my thinking, why I was proposing a separation, was to have a employee of the city who was, would be the face of the CRA, but also someone whose loyalties would not be divided between RMA, their employer, and the city, or the city's CRA, but they would, as an employee of the city or employee of the CRA directly, their alliances would be limited to the CRA, and I wanted to avoid any appearance of divided loyalties. If you go through the RMA contract, there are certain incentives and certain decisions that have fiscal ramifications for RMA versus the city. And so, that's one reason why I wanted to have that position taken out of the RMA contract.
Mayor, if you'd, if you'd like, I can give you a overview...
Sure.
...of the context, maybe of the decision points that you'll be going through, and then what Ms. Justice did, and what she just provided to you, was some examples of other CRAs and how they have made those decisions and the status that they're in. But to put it in a context, it may help as you go through this process.
That's fine, just for the record, identify yourself.
Yes, Kim Briesmeister. I am a principal with RMA, and you're a contracted firm managing the, both CRAs. The state of Florida has just over 200 CRAs, so there really, there is not a great deal of depth in terms of types of examples that you can point to, that you're going to see a pattern. Because there's so few of them, almost every CRA in the state of Florida functions differently, but there are a few things that are consistent with all of them as to how they are successful or those that have maybe not been quite as successful. And it really boils down to three things. One of them, and it starts with you all as the elected officials, because you formed the district to begin with, and then you had staff or you drafted a plan, and that plan is the guideline that forms what the CRA legally can and cannot do. So, you're already starting through Chapter 163, which is your legal entity. You're starting with a set of rules of what you can and can't do. The next is your size. You happen to have in West Palm, two districts. You can legally only have one agency, but you can have many districts. You have two of them, and the size of those districts dictates a lot of what happens, because depending on how big they are, and depending on what's happening in them, the ultimate staff you need to implement activities changes. The third is the amount of TIF that you have. This CRA, in particular, your downtown CRA, is one of the largest CRAs in the state of Florida. You are one of the most powerful in terms of having the most ability to use Chapter 163 at your disposal, and that's because of the year you were formed. In the 80s, CRAs were formed in 1969. Miami Beach was one of the first CRAs to get litigation that started to define what CRAs could and couldn't do, but you were formed in the 80s, which was relatively early on. CRAs that were formed before 2002 could live for a total of 60 years. Your initial term was 30, and if you chose to extend your agency, you could go a second 30. That's important, because after 2002, only CRAs could operate for a maximum of 40 years. One of the most powerful tools you have is bonding ability, and you have the ability to have independent-rated bonds, meaning that if you issue debt as a CRA, it doesn't count towards or against your general fund obligations. So, you have a very powerful tool in the agency, and because of your age and your size, and because of the implementation that you've done, you've got a very, very strong foundation for future growth. And just to put it in perspective, there are two CRAs that were formed about the same time that yours were. I don't, I won't name the cities, but just for perspective, your TIF in your one district is well over $30 million. Their CRAs have a total of $8 million and $11 million, and they are major cities. So, all of that difference has to do with the plan, the elected body, and the direction they gave, and the implementation. So, really, what you're about to do now is you're talking about the team and the director, and where that director position can reside. And what Allison has given you is some examples of other CRAs. Many of these, if not most of them, through my business partner, Chris Brown, and my 30 years in this business, we've been involved in these one way or another, most of them. And the only, the only preface I can say as you go through this discussion is, there is no perfect answer. It really has to do with what's right for you and your CRA, and the technical team that you have in place in its entirety, because the CRAs that didn't have the success and enjoy the success that you have, at times, they did have in-house directors, and at times, they had contracted directors. So, as long as the entire CRA board is setting the right direction, as long as your technical team in its entirety is capable and able to implement what you set, how you structure it is going to be largely up to you, and how much control and desire you have to involve yourself. The only caveat to these, and I can touch on them, that changed a little bit, is really since 1999 or the beginning of the 2000s, there's been somewhat of an attack on CRAs in general in Tallahassee, and that was because after 20, 30 years of functioning, counties started to realize that a portion of their monies were going to city CRA districts, and there was a tussle over really who should control that money. Broward County has always been on the forefront of the more aggressive side of trying to limit or eliminate CRAs, and in the Pompano Beach example, that was one where our firm actually was contracted in 2009, and they had really struggled for about 20 years to get things going. We were able in 10 years to get them functioning. They are now enjoying a tremendous amount of success, but because of litigation with the county, that CRA was reduced down to a TIF-only, city TIF-only district. So, they went from having 21 employees working on that city, now they're down to four in-house people. So, it isn't about the in-house versus contracted, it's really about the collective structure that I just... It's really about the collective structure that I just talked about in terms of having the board, your technical team, and your plans all lined up. That will give you the success and continue the success that you've had. We are your contracted firm since 2014. We are here and have been here to help you get where you need to go. It makes absolutely no difference to us which direction you go today. We will help you, one way or another, make sure that, again, collectively, your team is in place to get you the results that you direct us from an implementation standpoint. Another thing, in the contract that exists today, it didn't really come out the last time when you first had your presentation. The contract does not give us total authority to choose a director and keep that director independent of you. You have the authority to tell us we like that person, or we don't even like particular staff members. And that contract obviously can be amended either way, to include or not include positions, and/or the ability to add or delete them as your programs and projects change. So like I said, to summarize, we're here to help you in whatever capacity. I think you should be very proud of what this CRA has accomplished because it is recognized in the state as one of the most successful ones. And you have done, you've done a good job at keeping it that way through highs and lows of both market conditions, economic changes, political changes, et cetera. So we are here to help you in any way that you would like us to going further. Thank you.
Allison, do you have a separate presentation you'd like to make, or? Okay, all right. So, board members, commissioners, I'd like to hear your thoughts on whether you want to keep the executive director as part of the RMA contract, or whether you are open to having that position be a city employee. My thinking is the power to hire and fire would be a board decision. I'm not looking to have someone report to me as the mayor. I see this as a position that we report to the CRA board in totality. And so I'm happy to hear your thoughts, ideas, whether you want to move forward with that, or just maintain the status quo. Commissioner Nearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for your presentation. So my question is really around the process. So we've heard and we understand it in the contract as it exists today that we as a board have the authority to make a decision around ultimately who is the director. I don't think in the time that I have been on the commission, we as a board have, I know we haven't, we've not changed that philosophy. However, that decision was made, and it was made at the administration level. So my question really becomes around the process. So Mayor, you just mentioned that it would be your desire, not to put words in your mouth, that this would be a position that was hired ultimately by the board. What I would want to know is, you know, because as I look at the org chart, you know, it does appear to be a position that would report directly to the mayor. So my questions really are, what is the, what would be the process? If this position became a city position, what does that look like exactly in terms of hiring that position, in terms of ultimately changing? Because it is my opinion that ultimately, the board, the CRA board should absolutely continue to have the authority to make those decisions. I would strongly recommend that we do not change that in any way. Again, in terms of whether it's RMA or the city, I could go either way. It really is a process question, and maybe we don't have the answer to that now. Or maybe we do.
Well, and under the status quo, and Doug is representing the City Attorney's Office. As I understand it, the RMA contract is with the city. And so I, as the CEO of the city, can weigh in on any amendments or adjustments to that contract. And so it was in that capacity that I expressed a need for a change in the previous executive director. Now, actually, what I'm proposing is going to minimize my ability as mayor to make that change. Because as I said before, if the position comes in-house, and I don't know what language we have to put in place, but I'm not, I'm looking to have that position, hiring and firing, be done as a CRA board decision. And so I'm actually proposing a limitation, I guess if you will, on my powers. And so I know HR is here to talk about the process, I guess, for identifying and hiring a new executive director. If it was a city employee, but I don't know if that's the process you're talking about, or? Give me some clarification as to your question.
Yeah, I think specifically, you know, I think I have a pretty firm understanding of what that looks like under an existing RMA contract. The question I have is if that position were to come into the city, much like chief of police, chief of fire, whereas the, not the board, but the commission ratifies that, which is a lot different. The question I have is if this position were to come in as a city position, the board, not the commission, the board would ultimately vote on the decision, both in terms of how that recruitment looks, interviewing, very similar to the chief internal auditor, although I know that that's different because that is specifically the commission. But similar in terms of how that position is brought on board and then ultimately, delete is not the best term, changed if needed. Does that, is that clear in terms of the question? So it's the process?
So let's talk then, Mr. Rodriguez, if you want to talk about the process for hiring or identifying applicants and hiring a new executive director.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. Jose Luis Rodriguez, Chief Human Resources Officer. As the mayor and Commissioner Nearing were discussing, the process by how you would recruit the position and how you would manage the position would be a decision of you all sitting as a CRA board and then a city commission. So you would give us direction from, you would give HR direction as to how you want to recruit the position. We have some suggestions we can give you as to where you can post the position, and how the interview process will take place, and the selection. And the same thing with making changes to that position in the future. That would be something that you all would decide as a CRA board and as a city commission, and then provide direction as to how that position, should it be, needed to be fired or changed in the future, would occur. And I did put up here, just to facilitate the discussion of the differences between an in-house and a contract position, I gave you a handout, but I also put it up here as to some of the key differences between a CRA director as an in-house FTE position and as a contract position. The three main differences would be the direct accountability. If it was an in-house position, you wouldn't be managing a contract that manages the executive director. You would be managing the executive director directly, similar to how you do the internal auditor. You manage that position directly. That position reports to the CRA board and gets hired and fired by the CRA board. A second key distinction, I'm only going to cover three and then open it up for whatever points you want to speak to specifically, would be that the executive director as a city FTE would be helping to manage and provide oversight of the contract as opposed to that oversight occurring with someone other than the executive director, because obviously the executive director currently is part of RMA, so they're not going to, you know, police their own contract. And the third position would be a community stakeholder type of impact, where oftentimes, when you're trying to build consensus with the community and with local stakeholder groups, they sometimes tend to view contractors as, well, you're not really a city employee, so you're not really empowered to make a decision, you're not really empowered to speak for the city. And having an executive director that reports directly to the CRA board as a city employee would help to alleviate that concern because they have a city FTE that reports directly to the board that is with them at community forums, speaking and presenting the positions of the CRA board. Those are the three main differences and contrasts between them.
Did that address at least part of your question, or?
And if I could just ask one more, and then I'll stop for my colleagues. So in other words, if we were part of this process, the board was a part of this process, every board member would have a weighted, same weighted amount of power, if you will, in terms of making that determination. So if we had a candidate before us, we would vote very much in the way that we do on contracts. We would vote, if, let me back up. If we had two or three candidates in front of us, we would vote on those candidates. And as a board member, I'd be one-sixth of a vote, is ultimately what it is. That would be the process?
If that's what the CRA develops as how that position's going to be structured. Because right now, that position is not structured. It's for you all to make that decision collectively. But yes, that would theoretically be the way that it would work.
And I think that, at least with respect to the identification and hiring, the process would be where we publish this, probably statewide, Florida, the position, get applications in, probably have internal staff go through those applications and wean them down to the top five, three, or whatever. And then those particular candidates would go around, interview with each of you individually to avoid any sunshine law problems. And in an open meeting, we would have a process whereby we would choose from the top three or five, or whatever those were. And that's kind of how that would play out in terms of the hiring. Enter to a contract between that individual and the CRA board, which would spell out, you know, duties, et cetera.
And we did also have some, in case you decide to go in the direction of having an FTE that's recruited, we did have some suggestions based on our prior experience in HR as to where some of the organizations, in addition to the city of West Palm Beach website, you can post the position to try to get the most qualified candidates in those areas. So this is some of the suggestion that we would have is a way you can post it, both internally and the city's website, but also externally with outside organizations to maximize the reach. And also these, because these are Florida organizations and we're requiring Florida law experience usually for these types of positions, that's why we have it structured the way we have it as a proposal of what you can consider.
And was there a draft of the job description that was circulated to the board members? Did they get a chance to weigh in on the job description?
That was actually included in the packet when you had the first discussion. We did not include it here, but we certainly can provide it. But if I could.
Sure.
I think it has been intimated, but the key thing here in terms of the current structure, you know, is the fact that the CRA entered into an interlocal agreement with the city in terms of the management, you know, of the contract. So therein lies the authority or the discretion, you know, for the director relationship directly with the mayor. As you all are discussing this, if you're going to go in a different direction, then I think legal need to advise, I don't think that you need to then have that interlocal agreement between the CRA and the city. You know, if you're going to go in a different direction where this is going to be an in-house executive director position, it seems to me that we have a different legal structure in place, and I'll let legal weigh in on that. But then in terms of the recruitment, how you want that process to look? That's what we're looking for a direction. I think the mayor just articulated, and we certainly can proceed along that line. There are a number of options, once you get the applications in, on how you want to do the interview process. But that's the kind of discussion and direction we're looking to get today so that if you all come to a consensus, we can move forward, or not. You know, that depends on this body.
Commissioner. Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think the two things for me here today revolve around accountability and control. And that is for this commission, this administration, and commissions and administrations to come because this decision that we're considering, excuse me, affects that ability going forward. I think all along, I've echoed some of those concerns about the controls. And I think some context is warranted as well because when we started into this process, we had a different CRA director. We have an interim CRA director currently. And I will speak only for myself that I have felt a significant shift in a positive direction in the way that the CRA has been perceived, particularly in my district and amongst CRA Advisory Board members, et cetera. I want to make sure that the authority of the CRA board remains intact, both in communications and in decision-making, but also make sure that we are moving forward as a CRA board and as a CRA in a city. Some of the concern I have about this process at this particular point in time is that we are coming to the end of an economic cycle. We have several CRA, very, very important CRA projects that need to move forward. We're looking at a process at this moment in time that's going to be three months, four months, six months. I don't know the timeline, and I'm sure it just depends on the applicants, et cetera. And I guess maybe I put forward an alternative path out there that while I'm not opposed to considering this decision, is this something that we need to make a decision on now? Can we take a path forward of having RMA appoint a CRA director at the advisement of the CRA Advisory Board and revisit this to not miss out on getting projects pushed forward and completed? So I guess that's the idea that I would put out for discussion. Again, I think there are some distinct benefits that administration has put out for bringing the position in-house in that we, as a city, have a more congruent process and have a bit more control of that position. But I guess, as I look at the whole context of what we're considering, I look at the timeline and the place where we are today.
Okay, I hear you. Another advantage, and this has been alluded to, is having a person, individual, who will be responsible for administering the RMA contract. Right now, that person really doesn't exist. I guess it's a city function, since there's the interlocal agreement between the CRA and the city. The city is the party that has entered into the contract. So, you know, we could have a city staff member, and I think typically it's probably been the city administrator who was assigned that task of administering that contract on a day-to-day basis. The question is whether it would be more appropriate, more efficient, to have someone who was in the weeds, if you will, day in and day out as a CRA executive director, who really has their finger on the pulse of the contract and the performance of the contract by RMA. So I throw that out there as well. As an advantage of having an in-house executive director. So.
I have a question.
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you. I have two questions. One, as it relates to HR, I know that in the previous work session that we had talked about some maybe intricacies or details of if this CRA executive director became a staff person, would they be covered by city HR regulations, benefits, all of that? Did we determine that?
Yes, typically, they would be treated as no different than any other city employee in terms of benefits, procedures that they have to adhere by, their compensation package. The only difference would be that their reporting structure would not be to a traditional department director. It would be to whoever the board assigns.
Okay. And then I have a question about if this, if we were to take this in-house out of the contract. I understand that the CRA is, involves a lot of details and regulations and policies that are very complex. And that is, was part of the benefit of having it contracted is that you all deal with this. This is your specialty. So if we moved this in-house, or maybe you could even describe how you work with other municipalities when they have the executive director or staff person in-house to help make sure that that person has the knowledge and the wherewithal to make sure we're not making decisions outside of legal policies?
It's, thank you, Commissioner, it's a good, it's a good point because... It's a, thank you, Commissioner, it's a good, it's a good point, because some of the CRAs that do get either sideways with the statute, or end up having expenditures made that were inappropriate, it emanates from not having that technical knowledge in-house, and that's how those things happen. You have a couple of choices. And if I could, I just wanted to ask if the attorneys would check. I can't find it in this contract right now, but in our previous contract, because this was amended, the city administrator is the contract administrator. And we are supposed to be going to them, and they are supposed to be administering and making sure that our checks and balances are with them. But that obviously, if it's going to change, we have to amend our contract anyway. But it isn't that there is no identified oversight for the contract. Back to the technical skills, you have two sets that you're truly looking for. You're looking for the very deep knowledge, having to do with Chapter 163, and the expenditures, and the ability to use that statute to your utmost, highest and best use. So that, when you're interviewing, you know, you might have it checked off, because somebody says they were a CRA director for a while, or they carried a position. I would really delve down in, and again, we'd be glad to help you with that. We would do it, whether we provide that position, or we help you find someone. They have to have a very, very deep bench of knowledge with that statute. The second is a little more difficult to measure. That is the part that has to do with, take your real estate developments. You're not going to find that in your typical resume. You're not going to find it necessarily from somebody that's been a CRA director. Hence, that's why I gave that long upfront description of the technical talent from a team perspective. If your director has or doesn't have that ability to negotiate, let's say, large real estate developments, which that's the business that you're in, then you don't necessarily want to wait until you find a director that does, as long as you have someone else on the team, us, or someone else that does have that. And that can, without belaboring this, that can hold true for a lot of the initiatives within the agency. It could be marketing and business attraction, economic development isn't necessarily something you're going to find up there. So my suggestion is, we would need to make sure that your executive director's skill set is very, very clearly understood, and whatever they don't have, it's backfilled by someone or a firm. And then you'll be fine.
Yes.
Thank you. I have a question for Commissioner Shof to kind of talk a little bit about what you're suggesting. So are you suggesting, maybe we don't decide whether it's in-house or contracted right now, or, and kind of carry on for a few months, I don't know, six months, till we see some of these projects come to fruition with the structure that we have now as an interim executive director? Or are you suggesting, hey, maybe we just move forward, as is yet finalized, and make someone a permanent executive director with the contract, knowing that in six months, we might revisit this again when some projects are, you know, further along?
Sure. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I think that, in context, initially, when we started this, I was leaning towards making sure that we had those controls, and it seemed like the path to get there was to have an in-house position in the current director that we had. Since then, we kind of have this interim opportunity, where now it's not clear to me if some of the tensions that I know I personally felt representing were part of a style of a director, or if they were part of the structure of the position. And so I guess the suggestion that I put out there is, because of economic circumstances, I would be in favor of seeing if it is a style issue, and moving forward with the current contract that we have, and revisiting this in six months and seeing how we all feel. While I don't like to hold the CRA in limbo, and I certainly respectfully see why administration would bring this forward, I think that we may miss opportunities. We may miss opportunities to move key projects, and I will admit very selfishly, key projects within my district that I see that could possibly stall because of changes, and no disrespect to RMA and how they're moving forward. I know it's all hands on deck at RMA, it's just the nature of having those changes amongst the organizations. And so I put that out to you as my fellow commissioners, and as mayor for the decision of the CRA board, to consider that there may be a period of time where we're put in this unique situation now, where we have the ability to maintain the current structure that we have, but try it with a different style of leadership, and see how that goes. And if we still feel like we're in the same position, to make this decision at that point.
Okay. My only response would be, I don't see us stalling. RMA is on board, we have an interim in place, and I think that we are continuing to make progress on the various projects that are out there. So I don't see us, you know, kind of having to stop and start all over again. I think that we can walk and chew gum. We can undergo a process where we can identify a, if that's the druthers of the board, we can identify a good candidate, while we're continuing to keep our eye on the ball when it comes to these various projects, because of the contract that we have in RMA, and they know what their job is in terms of how we move forward. So I don't see that as being the reason for not moving forward with the suggested structure. You may have other reasons. Commissioner Peduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there's probably some benefit to maintaining some stability and continuity at this point. And I'm not sure if this is where Commissioner Shof was thinking, was that, you know, I would assume that our interim director may be a candidate for this position, and we have a unique opportunity right now to give that some time potentially. It's kind of like a long job interview, she's already in the position. It sounds like there's positive things happening and a lot of big projects that are occurring. And so there may be some benefit of giving it a little time, just to, you know, see how, see how things work out, you know, in the near future, anyway. I wouldn't necessarily have an objection to bringing the position in-house if things are the way you've suggested, Mayor, and my colleagues have suggested. I think it might be an expeditious way of us bringing in, you know, or us having more involvement in the selection process, obviously, going forward, and maintaining, you know, the authority that I think that we have and should continue to have as, and as an independent board.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would be in support of bringing the position in-house from the standpoint of both this current board and the future boards. I think it really does elevate both influence and, you know, we are in the trenches as commissioners and board members, anyway, and to have a better say in who and what that personality looks like, I think is very intriguing to me, both selfishly and, I think, for future board members. The other thing I would say, to your point, Commissioner Shof, and I don't necessarily disagree with it, but I would recommend that we just put a stake in the sand, you know, because the reality is, even under an RMA contract, we as a board would not have as much power, but we still would have the flexibility to say, hey, this personality isn't the right personality. So I'm fearful about continuing to kind of kick these projects down the road when we need to just make a decision on them. And we still have the opportunity. So I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying, if we are in fact going to, as a board commission, make that decision, we still have flexibility in six months to say, hey, it's not working out, either way. Although, I'll just go back to having that position in-house, as it's been described both by the mayor, and as I understand it from HR, I think gives this board quite a bit of authority that we don't currently have. And I think there's something to be said about that. So, that's my thoughts.
Commissioner Shof.
Thank you. You know, and I guess the reason for me putting out that idea was to try to get an appetite for this board. Again, I'm not opposed to bringing this position in-house, and if it's the will of this board to proceed with this today, to your point, Commissioner Neering, there's nothing set in stone. You know, any decisions made by this board would be now or in six months. So I guess, again, the thing that I stress are accountability and control. As long as the accountability and control of this position remains with the board, as an even vote amongst board members, I'm in favor of taking a look at bringing it in and just making sure that that information is memorialized in writing, that the specific duties of this board are to interview, hire, terminate, et cetera. And so as long as we are making sure, because I know we've had several communications discussions here, and I think it's important for the people who occupy these seats well beyond us to not have a different interpretation of what that means. And so, if we want to move forward today and say, let's put something in writing so that we could all review, I would support that decision.
Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate having this robust discussion here. I think that the reason why we're here today is because at our last commission work session on this, that we talked about the desire of this board to look at bringing it in-house. But I also am concerned in making sure that we don't stall on any projects. But it's my understanding from talking with Miss Justice, that things are still moving forward. Maybe, you don't have to give us an update on the projects right now, but you could tell us what are our next steps for making sure that we're staying on top of all our projects as we move forward and adjusting our contract with you all, if that is the case.
Yes, and that's another good point. Regardless, we have to amend our contract, because the contract as written clearly has to change. You have a few options. And today was going to be very telling for us as to which way we would have to go to keep things going. We are down, obviously, one full-time position. So that work got transitioned partially over to Chris and I. Partially, Allison assumed a great deal more, just hours and work, and then the rest of the staff consumed more time as well. That's probably not sustainable long-term. So depending on how long you want to take to transition, we have a couple options. One is Allison is your acting interim director. She's trained, she's qualified, she's very skilled, and I have total confidence that she will continue to keep the wheels on as we roll forward. Again, you have Chris and I here to assist. But if it's going to be an extended period of time, and I would say more than 90 days, my suggestion, so she does have a chance of being successful, is I would try to backfill the role that she was in, and have an additional, at least, set of man-hours coming into the contract to give her some more ability to function effectively, instead of being there by herself. That's already in the contract now, as far as having a director and a deputy. Right now, like I said, you're getting a morphed version of those two positions. So if you're, whatever direction you're going to go, if it's going to be extended, I would go back either to the mayor or to our contract administrator and the attorneys, and ask what parameters we have to try to provide you with those man-hours that we're supposed to be providing. And I think that is an interim solution that will work well. I don't think that things are going to necessarily stall, but I think, obviously, the sooner that there's full stability, the better.
I'd just like some clear direction. I think we can move ahead either direction which you, the board, decide. My preferences are clear, but I like to, you know, get a vote up or vote down, so we have an idea of which direction to head.
I can start. I think I'd be supportive of bringing the position in-house.
Okay, is there a consensus? We're not taking a formal vote, it's not a public meeting, but just a consensus, and we can then advise staff, yeah?
I would be in favor of that as well, but I'd also like to be kept apprised of what is the next steps with the contract and backfilling, and how that's going to be looking, because we all want to make sure that these projects carry on.
Absolutely. Commissioner?
I'm in favor of moving forward.
Okay.
I'm in favor as well.
All right. And we will address the concerns that I've heard here, of making sure there's something in writing to support the fact that this will be a position approved by the board, hiring and firing, and the process outlined, as articulated by the head of HR. If you all have any other questions in the interim, please feel free to direct them to the city administrator. But having heard the consensus, we will now begin the process of advertising for the position. I think that gives you some direction, RMA, and we will act of haste. I would suggest Kim and Allison maybe sitting down with the individual commissioners, and maybe giving them a briefing on where we are in various projects of interest, so they could kind of get an idea of where we're going and the progress we're making. Okay?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you. To Commissioner Shof's point about memorializing these steps, will the board be voting on bringing this in-house, and will we see those steps outlined?
Well, I think you will be voting on an amendment to the RMA contract. And I don't know if we want to do that in one step or two steps. We can certainly bring back an amendment, or we can adopt a resolution, if you will. Maybe that's the way to do it. And I'm looking at my lawyer and my city administrator, maybe we could adopt a resolution, memorializing what we discussed here about bringing the executive director in-house as a formal resolution of the board of the CRA, and, you know, whatever other language we need to confirm that this new position will be accountable to the board as a whole, et cetera, et cetera. Would that be appropriate?
I think so.
Yes, just so there is something in writing that we're voting on.
Yes, Mayor, Doug Yergin.
Okay.
Deputy City Attorney on behalf of Ms. Rothenberg. I would suggest, certainly, that we have the opportunity to go back. I think we need to look at the interlocal agreement between the CRA and the city, and take a look, obviously, at what we'd have to do with the contract between the city then and the RMA. Obviously, all can be done.
Okay.
We certainly want to make sure that it's...
The Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted as related to that.
Okay.
And I would agree with that. I think administratively, one of the other steps that would have to be taken is that you're going to have to do a budget amendment, because now you're increasing the city's FTE count. So we will lay all of that out, Mayor and Commission. I think it would also be helpful if we put together, given that we've heard the direction that the board wants to go, we will put together a timeline that will spell out when the recruitment announcement would hit, what would be the closing date, what would be the period in terms of which we would evaluate the applications. We would, at some point, need to get this direction from the board on whether you all want to interview the top three, the top five, what that number would be, and then how you want that process structured. So I would be in communication with you all on that, and then we'll flesh all that out, lay it all out, so that everyone is clear how those next steps would roll out.
Okay. So the next step is legal would look at the contracts between the interlocal, between the city, the CRA, come back to the board with suggestions for maybe amending that document, with provisions consistent with the consensus that we've reached today. From administrative level, you'll work on putting together a timeline, going over that with the board members, and so they'll be clear. Does that make sense? Okay. Yes.
Beverly Moss, Chief Internal Audit. I do want to emphasize, I think we're all aware that we have an open audit related to CRA. So as you guys are making these decisions, I do want to emphasize, one thing that we always notice in our audits is that we don't have policies or procedures that are being followed consistently. So I think it's important that whatever you decide, we establish whatever the policy or the procedure is going to be in advance, and then we follow through on it, versus if we say we're going to make a decision to bring someone in-house, and then later we determine what that policy or procedure would be. I think we'd be putting the cart in front of the horse, so to speak, and it would be prudent to make sure we iron all of that out first, before we begin a process that we don't have in place, written in place.
Okay, thank you. Not sure what that added. But anyway, okay. Any other questions, comments on this? Thank you all very much, and we will act accordingly. Thank you all very much, uh, and we will act accordingly. Okay, item three, uh, Fire Department Annual Report from Chief Matty.
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Diane Matty.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. And I'm pleased to present our fiscal year 2019 annual report. You have two documents in front of you. There is a PowerPoint and also a shiny glossy, which, uh, the PowerPoint is just gonna be an abbreviated version of the booklet. So this year, we are happy to announce we opened two new fire stations. On the top left, you have Fire Station Number Eight, which services the Northlake Corridor and Ibis. Um, after living in a trailer for 13 years, our firefighters were more than pleased to move into a brick-and-mortar building with hurricane-impacted standards and a beautiful roof and some really nice landscaping. And, uh, down on the bottom right, you'll see Fire Station Number Four, which is on Parker Avenue. It's the Flamingo Pineapple Park area, also services the City Place, um, neighborhood as well. Uh, that's a category five building, which, um, will be able to house some of our, our firefighters there. They've been in a trailer for several years and prior to that, a building that was kind of antiquated and we, um, weren't sure it was gonna hold up to a big storm anyway, so very proud of those two things. This center layout here is what we do by the numbers. Our annual 911 calls for 2019 fiscal year was 26,318. Um, we completed over 92,000 hours of firefighter training. You can see on the top right, our average response time was six minutes and 37 seconds. And the breakdown of just what our calls consist of in the middle circle, 75% of what we do is EMS, but we're still running a lot of fire-related calls at 25%. Uh, a highlight down at the bottom is that 93% of our firefighters are paramedics, which paramedics, uh, started in our city in the early 70s. We were one of the first adopters in the nation of the paramedic program.
Chief, before you move off of that slide, and maybe it's later, uh, how do these 2019 numbers compare to previous years with respect to the number of calls, the average response time?
We have a, a chart further along.
You do?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
The way it's broken out, um, here, sick person, fall with injuries, fire alarms, car accidents, those are our, our higher, uh, numbers of calls that we run. Things are broken down by fall uninjured or fall unconscious. So, so we get very detailed into, into how those numbers are broken down, but these are the bigger categories for them. Uh, the next section down, we're talking about mutual aid. 2027 calls out, meaning we ran out of our city into another district, whether it was Riviera Beach, down into Lake Worth, the western areas that the county covers, over 2,000 times. And, um, conversely, 1,400 roughly where we were provided service by another agency, whether it's a municipality or the county. Uh, interesting, um, down at the bottom, we had a 31% reduction in opioid-related calls over fiscal year 18. That's due to some reduction in our, um, halfway houses in the city and some really stepped-up, uh, programs by the police department. So this is our average response times in the Station One area, where we are right now, right in the downtown of the city, where previously we had two units, Truck One and Rescue One. In July, we, as an experiment, we put Engine One back into service on overtime. And immediately we saw an improvement in the response times to the downtown. So that truck had been taken out of service in 2009 due to the economic downturn. So it was presented to the city and in the 2020 budget, we were able to put that truck back in full-time, uh, make the promotions and, and staff it. So what we're gonna see going forward is an improvement in the percentage of time the first due unit is available. So that means somebody's home from Station One to take the call when a call in that zone comes out. If somebody is, if all those three trucks are out on a call, someone has to come from either Station Four, which is on Parker, or Station Three, which is up on Broadway in the, in the 5,000 block. So it takes more time. When we have more, uh, that Engine One in service, we went from about 10%, 10.6% of the time where nobody was home to take that call in this station to down around 2% to 3%. So that's a significant, significant, uh, improvement. This is a heat map, uh, which our GIS helped out with, um, a heat map of the fire calls that we have in the city, fire-related calls. So whether that's a fire, whether that's a car fire, fire alarms, and you can see that it really is dense in the downtown and then some of the other, um, hotspots throughout the city, so to speak. And then this is the same type of chart, but for medical. So you can see again, the downtown, uh, the north end, up just north of 45th Street, uh, out past Australian Avenue, some significant call numbers occurring in those areas. So what are we doing to prepare for the future? We have, uh, conducted almost 500 or trained almost 500, uh, city employees in the Stop the Bleed program. And that is something we, we could use in an active shooter or a, um, a knifing attack or a car driving into a crowd of people where we have, you know, over 1,500 city employees. If we can get to, to some good numbers, that's 1,500 more people that enhance what our fire department brings to the table every day. Um, we're distributing the Stop the Bleed kits and, and, uh, automated external defibrillators in City Hall so that those are available should we need it and hopefully we never do. ASHER training is Active Shooter Hostile Event Response. And that's, um, um, put, it's a document that's put forth by our National Fire Protection Association and fire chiefs across the nation agree that this is the way we should be responding to these types of hostile events. And the majority of our firefighters have been trained in it. Also, our emergency manager has been working diligently on some, um, mitigation grants along with, uh, Ralph Wall. And we've submitted, uh, for some of those such as, um, the Sea Wall and some other projects that are listed here, which, um, I think they went in about a month ago. Another thing we're doing to prepare for the future to, to deal with sea level rise and, and some of the emerging trends that are occurring when these hurricanes come is, uh, we have a swift water response team. So we had over 20 people that went to specialized training in North Carolina to learn how to do these rescues in fast-moving water from this boat. Also, Fire Station Number Nine, which is out in the Haverhill and Roebuck area, we, we never used to have a fire station out there. And in 2015, we put a fire station out there in a strip mall next to a Dunkin' Donuts and a pizza shop. And we became some neighbors for, for that neighborhood. But as soon as we went into service, you, you can see the in- improvement in response times went from eight minutes and 23 seconds on average down to around seven minutes. And the call volume in that area is growing. It also includes the, the baseball field, it includes, uh, Morse geriatric. So as that area develops, you're gonna see, uh, more calls increasing in that area. We are still working to, uh, improve our ISO rating. Uh, we did not hit the mark this time. We are a Class Two. Our overall rating did go up 5% from the last, uh, scoring that was conducted. Uh, but we've identified, we took a really hard look at what we can do internally to improve that for next time. We're gonna work very closely with the Water Department to make sure that, you know, uh, because a part of it, there's three parts, there's dispatch, there's the Fire Department, and then there's the water supply. So we're gonna make sure that we work very closely with the Water Department to make sure that all of our Is are dotted and our Ts are crossed. But for us internally, we need to increase our prev- fire prevention capacity, which means getting a life safety educator, which, again, that was a position we used to have before the economic downturn, and, um, improve or increase the number of our inspectors that we have. As the growth in the, in the downtown, we need more inspectors for the, for the additional buildings that we're getting. Um, reducing our travel and turnout time. So one of the things we're doing there is we're buying smaller trucks so that we can navigate better. We have better turning radiuses, we can, you know, as, as we, um, narrow the streets and, 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 um, we want to make sure that our trucks are maneuverable throughout the downtown and, and the other areas. And our turnout time, that's the time between when the call hits and the time that the wheels are turning down the road. So keeping that in mind, that that is a part that we absolutely control, is the time we get up from what we're doing or training to getting that truck in motion. We also have 16 senior officers that, uh, according to ISO, do not, do not meet the minimum standard for their job. So we're going to work with them to, to get them qualified and improve some documentation of our pre-fire planning. So this slide says.
Chief, excuse me. How often can, uh, when, when can we next reapply for the ISO?
Uh, Mayor, we can apply at any point, however, I caution against confused calls because they just dig deeper and look harder.
Okay.
In that aspect, but we're on a five-year schedule. So in 24, 2024, that we're scheduled.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor.
Oh, yes.
Just a quick question along those lines. Um, what kind of percentage increase are we looking at in order to obtain Class One status? What would we have to, you know, what, how much better do we have to get to obtain that Class One status?
We're.
Real close?
We're, we're close. We're close.
Get another 5% increase that could push us there?
I don't, I don't, maybe Chief Taylor can.
We need a total of 1.23.
Could, could you come to the microphone, please, and identify yourself because we're taping this, so?
This is, uh, this is Rick Taylor, he's our training chief. I'll allow him to speak about the ISO.
Uh, we need a total of 1.23 points to achieve a Class One status.
Okay, so a 90, or a, is it 88?
A, a 90, uh, 90 puts us in that status.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir, thank you.
This slide just talks about the breakdown of our budget versus personnel. Um, where other city, or citywide, I know that number is quite a bit different, but the Fire Department, uh, our general operating fund, we basically run the Fire Department, the operations of it on 14%, so around $6 million. And, um, that's the end of the presentation. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Thank you for that, uh, presentation. And, uh, one, one thing I've often said, uh, to you as well as the, uh, firefighters is that you, you need to do a better job of patting yourself on the back and letting the public know, uh, the valuable services you provide. Um, you know, for example, when we have a major event, Sunfest, Boat Show, uh, Fourth on Flag, you, you, you all are out there, uh, protecting us. And, um, you know, it's just nice to hear, uh, how good of a job you're doing, so.
Thank you very much.
Any recommendation is to do a better job of tooting your own horn because you do do a wonderful job and we're very proud of you as a department, under your leadership in particular.
Thank you, sir. It was important for us to do an annual report. Um, a couple of years ago, the Police Department threw one down at a, at a meeting and I went, well, I guess we should do that too. We, we haven't really ever done it, so.
Absolutely.
It's something that I felt was important.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baduzy?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, uh, a follow-up on some of the numbers that you had pointed out. Uh, the mutual aid numbers, uh, for response outside of our city, um, it seems that we are responding outside of the city maybe a little bit more than we're having response from other agencies into our city. To clarify those numbers, um, is that, those mutual aid numbers, anytime we run out of the city, with the exception of those areas that were contracted to provide service, such as Mangonia Park?
Excellent question. These numbers do not include Mangonia Park since they were part of our agreement. So when we categorize the calls that we respond to, it typically says WPB slash MP. So those are, because those are, we consider, you know, our first due, our primary calls. So we have a couple of areas that are, um, kind of mutually traded by, by Palm Beach County that we cover, such as Gramercy Park, where, where, you know, it's a county, um, area. However, it's very close to one of our stations, the same with, uh, Golden Links Village out off of the Oak Chobe area. We're right across the street. It would be a disservice to the community to not respond when we can be there faster, our station's across the street. So.
Same thing in the western communities, then, on the new Station Eight is responding a decent amount outside because it's the closest fire station.
Right, so if, if, if we are not home, if we are, our first due unit in Station Eight's area is not available, then that would be covered by either Palm Beach Gardens or, or the county.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Chief, great presentation. And to Mayor, to your comments, um, I am always happy to see our residents are tooting the horn for the Fire Department as well. I know a resident in the south end who a few years ago had a health concern and you all responded to it very quickly. And then unfortunately, a year or two later, then they had a fire at, in their house and it was the same responders and they could not say enough good things about the service that they received. So thank you for that. Um, just was glad to see the information in your annual report about preparing for the future and emerging trends. I'm curious if you can talk to us a little bit about how you continually monitor that. I don't know if there's a committee or how often you all meet to discuss these things. And, you know, is it discussed at conferences or, you know, how are you determining what are these emerging trends in fire safety?
So we have, uh, that's an excellent question. And the, the simple answer is that by going to training. When we send people out to Indiana for FDIC or when we send chiefs to chief conferences or wherever we go, uh, we pay attention to what's going on. There are newsletters and all kinds of emails that flood your inbox daily. But when you can sit around with your peers and, and hear what they're going through, you know, you, you can really try to take some of that stuff back. So that's, that's one of the things that, um, I like to encourage people to do. I like, I would try to avoid, you know, any cuts to that, you know, should we get to that point again in the future. Training is, is essential and getting out of our own backyard to see what other people are doing and, and taking a broad look at things is how we stay on the edge of that.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Shof.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for your presentation. Uh, I'm really, really proud that we have a great trained, um, first responder force out there working for us. But I think equally what you touched on is training that you're providing for staff members and, and citizens alike. In 2002, my father was at a local gym in Western Pierre where I grew up, was playing in adult basketball league and at 45, dropped dead of a heart attack when an AED was locked behind a door in a nurse's office. And it's something that a citizen can use just as easily as a trained person. But I think it makes people a lot more comfortable when they can be trained on that kind of equipment. So that kind of thing, that, that, that service that you provide for our community is really important. And I think the newer, uh, unfortunate emerging trend is the, the mash casualty sort of situations that we have. And so you have the Stop the Bleed class. And I read in your backup that someone can bleed to death within five minutes, which it's really difficult to get a first responder on the scene to a crowd within five minutes. So how can we help with that training? I know I've spoken with you personally about taking that training, being on construction sites frequently professionally. How can we help get that out to our citizens? Can we get classes together that are either citizen-funded or subsidized?
That's excellent. Um, we have given, like I said, over 500, almost 500 of our city employees have been trained. This type of training is important, not only just for an active shooter, but some of the, some of the feedback that we got from some of the guys that took the classes, this would have been great 20 years ago when I'm running a chainsaw out in the park all by myself and so-and-so got hurt or, or whatever. To teach them how to use that, i- it's applicable in so many different ways. But one of the things I want to do in this upcoming budget is put a line item in that for community outreach and for, um, because we have to compensate our employees for that time. So what we're doing, we're funding it right now through overtime when we're doing the city employee classes. But I think it's important that, you know, unfortunately, this is the way that, that life is right now and we have to respond to that and be prepared for it. So I'm looking to expand that program going forward.
Yes.
Just to follow up on that, if we had a community group that wanted to take the class, could they help self-fund that to compensate for staff time? Would that be something that we could approach your department on?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Neering.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thanks again for your presentation. Speaking of budgets, do you think, um, in terms of Fire Station Six, that at some point, maybe five, 10 years, uh, as we look forward? Um, I know it's probably one of our older stations now, but a very important, uh, service, um, to the community. Just, any quick thoughts on Fire Station Six and?
Well, I have some thoughts on Fire Station Six.
Okay.
It was built in 1985 and it was built for three people.
Right.
And we're currently running six people out of there and have, you know, a lot more capabilities than we did during that time. So, uh, down the line, um, we have Fire Station One, uh, right here.
Right.
Which was built in, uh, 1980, so it's a little bit more senior and a little bit closer to the need, uh, first. But then Station Six, uh, would be next because everywhere else is at least, at least been rebuilt, um, since the, in the 2000s.
Great, and then the last, uh, point, really want to thank you and your team, uh, the annual high-five for success and, um, our many. our men and women in uniform were out with, uh, fire trucks and just, uh, it, it made for a great day at both our elementary and middle schools across the city. And, uh, believe it or not, uh, August tenth, twenty twenty is the first day of school. And so never too early to, to plan for that. But thank you, uh, for your leadership on that and, and for the entire team for supporting that initiative.
Thank you. I can speak for my firefighters and that, that is one of the more fun events that we get to do, so thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Baduzi.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick follow-up on, on Commissioner Cho's topic on Stop the Bleed. Um, have we done any joint training with our police department with regard to that program? I know that police officers are often on the front line and the first to arrive on these scenes that involve the use of, or the need for a tourniquet, et cetera, um, because often the scene's not safe. Um, and there can be tremendous amount of time that goes by making sure the scene's safe before our paramedics are actually able to come in. Have we done any training with our police department?
The, the police department does their own for that. They, they have training on those types of things and how to use those, um, combat tourniquets.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you again, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate all the work you guys do. Mr. Kelly. Stormwater project updates.
Adios.
While he's, uh, loading that up, get started, um, really, I wanted to bring the commission up to speed on some of the major projects. These are some of the larger projects that were underway in regards to stormwater. Um, to refresh everyone's memory, um, several years ago, we ended up going out and borrowing twenty-five million dollars um, to meet identified needs, um, within the city. So we've been diligently working on projects associated with that. Um, and so today, I'm going to go over, uh, three of the largest projects, which is, which are Washington Road, Twenty-Sixth Street and North Flagler Drive, which is Phase Two of a stormwater project we've been working on. But I'm also going to talk about a new initiative we have, which are tidal valves. And I know this is on the front of many people's minds, um, particularly in light of what we've been experiencing over the last couple of years. So to start with Washington Road improvements, this is a, a very large project. Um, it's point six miles. Uh, begins at the intersection of Washington Road, Edgewood, and continues north all the way to the south side of Monso. Um, so it's, it's an extensive project, um, and it has, um, a lot of component parts to it. Um, it's a very complicated project. Um, twenty-four hundred linear feet of stormwater pipes. Um, today, we don't have a stormwater system on Washington Road, so this is a brand-new system. And we're also going to talk about tidal valves. On these particular outfalls, there's an existing one at Greenwood Drive. I think, uh, people are familiar with the fact that that has flooding, um, from high tide events as well as a new sixty-inch outfall at George Petty Park. They'll both have tidal gate valves on them. Um, we have four-inch, um, asbestos cement pipe and it's going to be replaced with twelve-inch ductile iron, which will provide fire protection, which currently doesn't exist today. Um, and also fix a situation where we've had four, just this last year, we had four water main breaks that required boil water notices just in that stretch alone. So it's, really needs to be replaced. Um, and then replace the sewer system, which is, um, in desperate need of replacement. And then we're going to, um, fix the roadway. Um, we're going to replace the sidewalks and, um, also provide traffic calming with raised intersections. And also a protected bike facility, which will be a raised, um, bike facility. So, um, this is a very complete project, um, and we're excited about, um, being able to do all this concurrently. Uh, here's the cross-section that you're going to see. Um, uh, we're narrowing the lanes, but, uh, when you count, uh, the nine-foot-six-inch travel lane, we also have an eighteen-inch gutter pan that counts towards, towards that. So, uh, certainly wide enough to accommodate any truck traffic that would go through there. Hopefully, we don't have a lot of through truck traffic on, on Washington, but it would accommodate it. Um, but as you can see, we're going to have five-foot raised bike lanes. So it's basically pavement that's raised, um, in order, uh, it's not at the same level as the, as the road. Um, and then new sidewalks. Um, so there's a lot of needs here. Um, roadway flooding, we have it from two directions here. One from high tide events, but also from when it rains, there is no stormwater system. So it just sits on the road and doesn't drain off, uh, for quite a time period. Um, also, we're going to provide a level of treatment for the stormwater before it reaches the Lake Worth Lagoon, which will improve water quality. Um, and I already talked about the water main breaks, um, the traffic calming, which is desperately needed here, and pedestrian and bikes, bicycle, um, safety in regard to, um, to being able to access through this area. Uh, the plans are ninety percent completed. Um, we anticipate the spring that the final plans will be completed and, um, construction will start in late summer. It takes time to bid the project. It's five-point-seven million dollar project. Uh, Twenty-Sixth Street improvements, this is another project that's really been a tremendous need. Um, for extended time period, we've had a failing stormwaters, um, line along this corridor, which is from, um, it's on Twenty-Sixth Street from west of Pointe Sieta, um, to Flagler and then across the north end of Curry Park. And we've ended up actually having to restrict access to only two lanes of traffic um, because of the, uh, fact of the failing stormwater main. So as part of this project, we're going to line the forty-eight-inch sanitary sewer main, replace the water main, replace the sewer force main that's in here. There's a lot of utilities in this corridor. It's making it very difficult to be able to maneuver in this area. Uh, we're going to permanently reduce the roadway from four lanes to two lanes. We did extensive study on traffic. There was never a need for four lanes. Um, and then, um, provide a multipurpose pathway and raised intersection at Pointe Sieta and Twenty-Sixth Street for traffic calming. So this is another comprehensive project. Uh, this one's complicated by the fact that we want to make sure we can save the trees, as many of the trees. Um, in the median right now, um, if you can see in the middle, in the landscape area, we have mature trees in this area and we don't want to be able to disrupt them. So we ended up, it delayed the project because we ended up getting specialists to come in to make sure that, um, that we, whatever activities we would do wouldn't adversely impact the trees. It looks like there are two trees because of safety that will have to be removed, but otherwise, all the rest of the trees will remain. So that's good news. But we had to move utilities, we had to move everything around in order to accommodate that. Uh, we got two ten-foot travel lanes. Um, and this is looking east towards Flagler to get your orientation. There's a twelve-foot, uh, pathway, multi-use pathway of where the other lanes of traffic used to be. So we were using that space and then landscaping as well. So the revised sixty percent plans, um, should be completed by May. Um, a hundred percent design plans and we have to have it permitted, uh, through the regulatory agencies by September and construction start by a year from now. Um, and the estimate at this point is four million dollars. Um, the next one, North Flagler, another project that's been around a long time, um, is Phase Two of this project. We've completed Phase One. Phase One of this project, we bought what was called the Holly property because we needed room to be able to run additional, uh, extend additional facilities through this property. So we removed, um, the house and other structures on the property. Um, we lowered the driveway to provide some immediate relief on Flagler so that the water would drain through the property. And we created a retention area to store runoff, which enhances the water quality before it discharges to, um, to the, um, Lake Worth Lagoon. Um, so, um, here's the report we've done, which we've completed now to see what additional facilities, because we ended up waiting until the other work was completed so that we could actually, um, get into the facility to be able to inspect the existing fifty-inch outfall line. We couldn't even get access to it. So now we've completed that inspection and we've done the hydraulic analysis. And the answer is a parallel fifty-four inch and eighty-four inch outfall pipes, um, on the property, on the Holly property. So there's, to be three outfall pipes. There's, this is an extensive, um, I mean, expansive, um, area as far as, um, stormwater, um, basin. So it's, um, this is what's required. We're also going to provide some additional stormwater conveyance west of Flagler Drive between Liddy and, um, and North Flagler. So some, some additional, uh, work there as well. So that's the next phase. And on all these projects, um, we have been doing extensive outreach, regular meetings on, um, on Washington Road. Um, we expect that we'll be back having meetings on North Flagler as well as on, um, Twenty-Sixth Street as well, as far as community outreach to, uh, bring them up to speed. Uh, the schedule, um, as I mentioned, the evaluation report's complete. We're going out for R F Q for the detailed engineering in February and, um, it should be permitted by fall and that means that we could start a year from now in regard to, um, that would should be twenty twenty-one in regard to the construction. Okay, the tidal valve installations, as I mentioned, this is a new venture for us. Um, we've always had some, um, tidal flooding on the streets, but now it seems to be a regular occurrence. And I guess really what's difficult for people to understand is this occurrence is during sunny weather. So, you know, people would expect if it's raining, maybe you would have standing water on the road. But they don't understand, um, why it floods, a road floods when it's sunny outside. And the reason why is because at extreme high tide events, the water actually backflows through the stormwater system and then comes up through the grates, intake grates, and then floods the road. Because it's, it's at a higher elevation than the, than the roadway. So, um, the issue here is not just the fact that it's flooding, it's the fact it's flooding with saltwater. So if people are trying to gain access to their home, they're having to drive through saltwater, which is not very good situation. So what I just wanted to do is to show you that these, these such, uh, these valves work. Um, this is Hollywood, Florida, um, before and after. We, you know, we're just getting started with this program. Hollywood is ahead of us because they were, they had a lot more extensive flooding than we've had. Um, but you can see, uh, the difference, all these on a sunny day, of the fact that, um, with the, with the, um, tidal gates or flap gates, that, um, they were able to prevent, uh, backup of water from the coastal areas. Um, here's examples of tidal valves. Um, I'm going to pass this around. This one is a, a model of the inline valve. So if you look at it. Um, but there's three different types, flap gates. They all have applications. The flap gate valve we're going to use on the Washington Road project. Uh, there's positives and negatives to, plus pros and cons to each one of these. Um, this one happens to be the best application for us there uh, because we'll be able to get to it to clean it on a regular basis, debris or barnacles or whatever. D O T's using what is called a duckbill valve on the Southern Boulevard work they're doing. Uh, the negative on that valve is that you have to get in a boat and usually with a diver to be able to get to it because it's out on the end of an outfall. Uh, so that's the negative. Uh, we're focusing on an inline valve, um, which we've piloting right now, which I'm sending around. Uh, they can be put anywhere in the outfall. They don't have to be at any particular location. Provides more flexibility and it operates better under varying conditions um, and has less, uh, risk of being, uh, plugged up or, um, of, um, barnacles adversely impacting, uh, the operation of it. So, um, as I mentioned, we piloted a couple of these, two different manufacturers on Trinity Place and Pershing Way. And we're gathering results on those two projects. Um, but we also, while we've been doing this, has identified the priority areas. These are areas where there's extensive sunny weather flooding on the roadways that could adversely impact people, that they would physically have to drive through this with their vehicle or be able to access through it, um, as pedestrians through water that is extensive. So these are the areas that we've identified. Um, and, um, you know, just give you some examples of where they're at. Um, here's one on Lakeside, and I have one on each one and I can get copies of this, that identifies each one. Barcelona, you know, we know, we've heard about that one. Um, but the area that's been most impactful as far as sunny weather flooding is Greenwood Road to Southern Boulevard. And there's four, um, that we're planning on doing and these, and I'm going to go through the schedule. These would be the first four that we would do beyond projects that were, are, beyond valves that we'll already include in projects. If you look on the north end of that, the thirty-six inch and fifteen inch, that would be included as part of the Washington Road project. So I can just give you an example of what the flooding looks like. It's pretty extensive. Here's a sunny weather flooding coming back from, um, from the intercoastal. So, um, oh, let me, the link didn't take me where it should have gone. Here's another one, just to show examples. Uh, that's on South Flagler, Thirty-Seven oh fifty-five. You can see it's extensive. And for someone to reach their home, they're going to have to drive through saltwater. So this is the first areas that we are wanting to address. Oh, shoot. Sorry.
Uh, hold on, Scott. Question, Commissioner Cho?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you, Mr. Kelly. Just a question on the, the tidal valves. So the water table's coming up and pushing this, the saltwater back up through the stormwater system. If we put a valve that effectively stops that water from coming up through the stormwater system as the stormwater rises, is it not just going to come over the seawall as well?
Well, we don't really have that situation where there is seawall. We've not had any situations except maybe in a hurricane where the water has actually, um, gone over the seawall. So, um, we, we don't have that here in, uh, West Palm Beach at this particular point in time. Um, now there's areas where there are no seawall and so the water does travel over land. So no, um, we don't, uh, see that up, happening. But I'm glad you brought that up because one of the things that people will need to be made aware of, and this will be part of the education, is during the period of time when you have high, um, high tides, uh, that valve will close. And so if it's raining during those periods of time, then the stormwater, which is fresh water, will not be able to escape until the tide goes back down. But people will be driving through fresh water, not through saltwater during that period of time. Um, and it will be for short duration because as soon as the tide goes back down, then the water will be able to go back out. Yes?
Mayor, may I?
Hold on, did you have a-
He answered it. I had a question about, you kept on mentioning, um, saltwater, but I, and, and sunny day events, but I was curious about when it rained as well. So I think you answered all of it.
Okay, Commissioner Baduzi?
We're going to have that issue though regardless of whether the valves are-
Can you talk into the mic, please?
I'm sorry. We're going to have that issue, I don't know if this is on?
Yes.
Of regardless of whether the valves are in place, if it rains a lot, if, if the tidal is, if the, the tidal height is high, water's not going to be able to drain anyway if it rains. So it's really not going to make a difference whether there's valves in place.
Well, we're fortunate here, um, because we're not having to capture this fresh, freshwater, stormwater and then pump it out to tide because, um, our elevations are higher and we don't have the extensive canal systems that they have further south in Hollywood, Fort Lauderdale, Delray, Miami Beach. All those places have severe issues today with that type of situation and they're ending up having to capture the stormwater and then pump it, which is a very expensive proposition. We're not at that point. We're not at that point in today with that. So we're fortunate, but we're looking towards the future, and we'll continue to study that of what the next steps are. Because this will address, in my opinion, the immediate concerns, which is the saltwater coming up and flooding the roads. So here's the four that we're planning on doing this calendar year, and we're proposing to come back in February with a resolution requesting funding for $1 million from reserves from the stormwater bond program. So we're proposing that. And that would take care of the four that are the immediate concerns, and then we would complete the rest of them in 2021. It takes a while to do these because you have to do an inspection, you have to clean the pipes, and then in some cases, you'll have to line the pipes if they're not in condition to be able to insert these, these gate valves. So with that, that's the end of the presentation. So I don't know if there's any questions.
Thank you, Scott, for that presentation. Madam President?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation on, on all the projects. I have some questions about the tidal valves, but before that, I just wanted to say thank you to you and your staff. I know that there was extensive outreach on the Washington Road stormwater project, and I know that those residents were extremely grateful in saving trees and all the extra efforts that went into that. So thank you. I just wanted to make sure, as it relates to the tidal valves, so I think I understand, but I just wanted to confirm, there won't be a manual on or off switch? This will just be based on the rise in tide? And I see you nodding.
That's correct.
Yes, okay. And you mentioned that something very important with this will be the maintenance and cleaning schedule of this, and I'm, I'm sure we don't have that today as we're still installing these, but we will have a maintenance, a regular maintenance schedule? Or will it be up to residents and others when they see them blocked and things aren't flowing out that we'll have to call and, and get them cleaned?
No, there'll be a preventive maintenance schedule on all these valves, or else they, they won't work then, so.
Awesome, great. And then my last one was just that you're saying that this is a, this is a really good interim proposal because we have higher ground in West Palm Beach, higher than the, the water, the body of water where it's draining to, but that as sea level rise continues to grow over the next 10, 20, 30 years, that we'll be looking at more long-term solutions as well?
Well, and this will be a permanent solution. It's just that if there are, if this becomes very frequent in the number of events that occur to where there's high tide events, then at some point, you have to face being able to handle the freshwater, rainwater that will fall because otherwise it'll, you know, you'll have too many events where you'll have flooding from the freshwater from the rainfall. And so at that point, then you have to look at pumping it is really the only way. So you'll retain it, pump it, you know, either over the seawall or into deep wells, but it becomes a lot more complicated, a lot more expensive. But I appreciate you bringing up about the people on the outreach, and I failed to introduce Suzanne Burglin because she's the one that was the outreach in regard to Washington. She's done a great job. And she is managing the water, wastewater and stormwater design efforts. And then Tracy Ward, who put this together, and is, is senior project engineer on, on all these, on all these stormwater projects. That's his specialty is stormwater, so I just want to make sure everybody was able to recognize them, so.
Commissioner Cho.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Kelly, on two projects that are occurring within District 1. For the 26th Street, I'm glad you brought that up. I was just looking at that this weekend, thinking it had been a while that we had the road closed off, and I know the neighbors and businesses there are eager to get that road moving. To the extent that we can save as many trees there as possible, I know you're making best efforts. Those are some very mature mahogany trees, and, and the neighbors would really appreciate trying to keep those in place, so I appreciate that work. On the North Flagler Drive, could you share with us on the Phase 1, some of the immediate results that we've seen?
Well, it, it ended up, Phase 1 ended up providing a relief valve, so to speak, because it was, we essentially created a weir that when the water started getting deep on Flagler, that it would flow over the driveway. So we lowered the driveway, and would, the driveway would almost be like a spillway and then go out to the intercoastal, overland. So that was the immediate to try to relieve the severity of the events because it was, they're very, very deep. The water gets very deep up there. So that was the benefit of that. But we needed to be able to clear the property to be able to get access to the existing outfall and inspect it and go through all the condition assessment before we were able to then look at Phase 2, which was doing the study on what parallel lines we would need and that sort of thing, so.
Thank you, because I know flooding is still pretty severe.
No, it's still, it's still existing. That's what the need for the parallel lines, obviously, there's still a great need for that.
To clarify, we're looking now at three outfall lines, the existing outfall line, as well as an additional 54-inch, an additional 84-inch line?
That's correct.
And then on the existing line that's there, part of the issue stems from way back before your tenure of having that pipe lined and the lining failure is what I understand?
Well, we thought that lining had failed, but it, it, it's not in bad condition. We thought because it, there wasn't adequate capacity there. But frankly, what it was, was there's just, it needed a parallel, a parallel line. It was a bottleneck. And when they reduced the size of it by lining it, it just made the situation worse.
Okay. So we're, we're confident that now we'll have three outfall lines?
Yeah, we've inspected that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you again, Mr. Kelly, for this presentation, and it's good to know that we are making progress on a number of these very important stormwater projects. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I don't have anything on mayor's matters. Commissioners, Commissioner Cho.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question as to the matter of the settlement between leisure resorts and other parties. I know we had scheduled an executive session, well, we had, you had requested executive session. Nothing had been scheduled. I know there's been several legal documents sent over by leisure, as well as other parties, seeking some quick resolution to that matter. So I was just curious as to either an update or getting that session scheduled or how we were proceeding forward.
I'll have the city attorney come speak to you. There was a status conference in December, as I recall, and, but I don't have the details offhand, so I'll have you guys briefed by the city attorney.
Thank you.
Any other matters? If not, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your time.